Good evening, everyone. Call the Public Hearing and Regular City Council Meeting Tuesday, March 10th to order. At this time, I invite any of you who wish to participate in the council to arise for our invocation of our Pledge of Allegiance. Oh, yes, ma'am. Councilman Gammage will lead our invocation. We'd ask that the Girl Scouts come forward to help lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would y'all be willing to do that?
Yeah.
Great.
Please, sir, you may. Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us here today, God, another day that we have received to serve you, Jesus. I'm thankful for all of the guests that are in this room today, God, and I pray that they will see us making decisions that are upright and upstanding to the city of Hartsville, God. I pray for our continued blessing and grace to make it through this evening, God, and wake up one more time tomorrow. In your name we pray. Amen.
Okay, girls, would y'all come forward? Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which is theirs, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you all. Okay, please proceed. This time, the chair will be in motion to wave our evening improvements in February 11th, 2020, regular city council meeting. If you're in such emotion, there are any discussions appearing on favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Prose by name. We're going to move into presentations this evening. We have... They sat down. I didn't mean to sit down. The Girl Scouts are here. Y'all come back up.
Yes.
Y'all want to come up here first?
Yeah.
So that way, y'all can... Y'all can take a picture with the city seal underneath it, because we've got something special for y'all. So this is a special proclamation. Okay? It's actionable. Yeah, so you get a whole week for Girl Scout week. And that means that you get to stay up 30 minutes later, right?
Yes!
So are y'all all selling cookies now?
Yeah.
But you... I bet everybody here wants them.
Yes.
So you know what they have for y'all? So you get... Y'all call them merit badges? What do you call your badges that you get?
Uh, badges.
Badges, okay. Since y'all came to council, we've been promising this for a long time, but we have very special badges for your uniforms. So these are special Hartsville badges, and you only get them if you come to a meeting. And so y'all came, so y'all came.
Thank you.
So do you have any friends that didn't get to come tonight?
Yes.
We got one more. Or two more. Not sure? Not sure, okay. Well, we'll give your leader a few if she needs them to text to whoever didn't come. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, so thank you all for coming. Come back and see us soon. Everybody's doing good at school?
So this is all?
This is it? Who did their homework already for school tomorrow? Uh-oh. All right, so what are y'all going to do now? Are y'all going home to like relax? Eat, drink?
No.
Ethan, y'all want to tell everybody about the Girl Scouts while you're here?
I want to.
Yes, and you want to buy some, right? Tell them you want to buy some.
I want to buy some.
And also tell me the... You're all in the same troop?
No.
No.
I'm in a different one.
So tell them what troop that you're in. Why don't you do this? Let's do this. You tell them your name and what troop you're in.
Okay.
And, yeah, please, go ahead. So I'll tell you which troop it is.
I don't know.
Oh, is it one of your bear?
I don't know. No, it's not.
Eastern?
1500.
Oh, 1500?
She's in 1500.
Yay! I'm reggae priest. My troop number is 1500.
Okay.
Yay! People, don't be afraid. People. I'll go again.
Who else?
I'll go again.
My name is Lila, and I'm in troop 1502.
You next.
Okay. I'm Melissa, and I'm in troop 1503.
You next. Okay. You next. You next. You next.
I don't even know it's all... All of them are carrying off.
You next. You next.
Carmen.
1502.
My name's Gavin, and I'm in troop 1502.
Mary Sullivan.
My name's Bella, and I'm in troop 1502.
Next.
My name's Bella, and I'm in troop 1503.
Uh, you next.
My name's Sarah.
119.
119.
And this is all... She's kind of shy. She's in 119.
119.
My name's Diana, 119.
Mary Sullivan.
I'm 111, what?
Tell me, I didn't hear.
1502.
Tell me, what was your name? I didn't hear your name.
1502.
Okay. And you're in...
119.
Here, tell them your name, and then say 1502.
1502.
So, Mary, how many troops do we have here?
Apparently, we have 1500. 119.
So in Darlington, I mean, in Hartsville, in Lee County, we have 10 troops.
10, really?
Yes!
And are y'all working on a project right now, or do y'all do?
No. We're doing lots of different things.
Sound of a bunch of cookies.
So, yeah, we've just finished up the cookie season, and that's taken a lot of time with all the troops.
Yeah.
And so we've done really good as a service unit, and, yeah, so it's been really good.
All right, girls, thank you all for coming. Make sure you sell your badges on. We'll see you again.
So we want to get a picture of everybody, so we all come down here. And I swear, if y'all please step up, and we'll let these taller ones behind y'all.
Tall one's in the back. She'll stand in front.
So right back up, Janice, come forward.
Carmen, you come forward a little bit.
Janice, two thousand. Yep. There you go. Olivia.
I'll scoot in on this front for me.
Yeah, so you're... You get the whole...
I've got anything, Mary Sullivan. Yeah, that look good.
All right.
Say cheese, big smile.
Cheese!
All right, all right, girls.
She should give it back to her.
All right. All right. Okay, so next up on the agenda, we have SEL Day, Social Emotional Learning Day, and Councilman Gammage is going to present this and tell us a little bit about it.
For sure. Now, our students, come on up. Student council. PD. I'll let you guys do the introduction to yourself, see if y'all are paying attention. So do you guys tell them your name, and what school we go to, and your position on student council?
My name is Dawson Bailey. I'm a president.
What school?
I go to PD Math Science and Technology Academy.
My name is Shakira Woodson. I'm a vice president.
Hi. My name is Caleb Thompson, and I'm a deputy of office.
My name is Jada, and I'm the treasurer of PD Math Science and Technology Academy.
My name is Naomi, and I'm a historian.
Dawson, can you tell us what SEL is?
SEL stands for socially emotional learning.
So at PD Math Science and Technology Academy, in Bishopville, our director's here, Mr. Bailey. He's a K-10, going up to K-12 charter school. And so today, we want to celebrate Social Emotional Learning Day. Basically, everything that's not on the report card. We're talking about critical decision-making. We're talking about self-awareness, decision-making skills. And so at PD, we've adopted a curriculum that we practice weekly, these skills that are... We work on outside the classroom to build a whole child, outside of test scores, outside of the pedagogy. We want to build what people grow in our community. So this is an opportunity to commemorate building a whole child, and happy to have the PD and SBA student council here with us as well.
All right.
Oh, and we have a proclamation to present. This might put you to the mayor, that doesn't... But I'll be the mayor today. So we have a proclamation to present to PD and SBA, proclaiming actually March 27th as SEL Day, and that's a national initiative that's going on. If you know anybody else interested in SEL, just tell them to Google SEL Day, and, um... And, yes, to be a part of the movement, so.
Dawson, are you related to that guy back in the... President Keith there?
Yes, sir.
How do you know him? Is he real?
I've got to him.
I've known him for a long time. All right, they're going to take a picture?
Y'all got it?
Got it? We're good. Okay. Thank you all for coming. Okay, Mr. Preston Coker is here from Coker Farms National Historic Landmark with an update. Welcome, sir.
Blackout, what happened? He's going to send you five persons.
That's right.
When it comes to social emotional learning, I would encourage each one of y'all to maybe stop by La Crema, and when it comes to social emotional learning, you'll see a lot of white people pictures. Over the past 10, 12 years, often I've worked pretty hard to put together as much memory and historical information about Coach Peter Seaver, just in here. And so I made the decision, as the national historic landmark, to utilize La Crema Coffee Shop. Bobby McGee has been in there this morning. I saw him, and you might want to make some comments about what you saw. But we have over 250 photos in there, old seed bags, 10-foot-long Cochrane-Hydrick coin sign, and other stuff. It is the most complete collection of, I want to call it iconic photographs, of the men and women that were responsible for the success of Coach Peter Seaver. They're responsible for living up to Blood Will Taylor and the Red Heart, and through that and that. And in there, you will see the story of the Red Heart, which was, um... Which was offered by the work of A.D. Alpin' Alphabets Wiggins, and then the comments made by James Blacko, who was a former maker here, very early. But all that information is available. We selected La Crema for several reasons. It gets a lot of the younger people, here in Hartsville, that come through, and that's Coker College, Coker University, and also from the Governor's School of Math and Science. And they don't know a lot about history. They don't know about the fact that in 1940, the ladies that were picking cotton, which are pictures of the field, and were making $0.05 a pound, cotton sold for $0.27 a pound. Now, mostly, women, at least women, could pick 100 pounds an hour. When I was eight years old, I picked cotton out there about the best I could do, because the little boy was about 40 pounds an hour. I got $0.20, they got $0.50. But in today's dollars, now, 140 pounds, that's $17 an hour in 1940, when gas was $11. No income taxes, adaptive property taxes, or state taxes. And Coker was $0.50, and you get two pictures of bull dung for a buck. That equates today to $17.45 an hour, which is pretty good, because I didn't pick cotton all year long. But, you know, there's a lot of misinformation out there about history, and history's a wonderful thing. And so I'm going to go and give historical presentations, talk about Coker 139 Tobacco Seed, talk about the first tractor in the state of South Carolina in 1913, Tatum, talk about the people behind Coach Peter Seaver's seed company, why it started, what it did. And then I'd like to have a Q and A session. I'll probably do it for one hour in the evening, 5:30, 6:30, or whatever the kids tell me all day. And I encourage all of y'all to stop by. If you need a cup of coffee, tell them it's on Preston Coker, and they'll give it to you free. So, but only once. And I'm not buying Girl Scout cookies, but I've already bought mine. But anyway, we are very proud, and I made the design for the whole thing, I'd like to take it to the library at Coker University, and I'd like to take it to Darlington, to France. We have all the artists today, and she is putting it in all three of their new editions, including SC now. So, and 50% owner of La Crema has just gotten a lot of great feedback out of it, and I hope it brings tourists not only to the museum on Fourth Street, but to Hartsville in Champaign. So it was a labor of love, and I'll continue to add to it, but I just thought y'all might like to know.
What day are you starting this on? Sorry? When are you... I mean, when are you doing your Q and A and your presentation?
I had decided this morning to be a Tuesday evening. I am going to put something in there. We're going to leave the exhibit up in La Crema at least until the end of May.
Okay.
And then I have let the people at Clemson College, Dr. Krusich, each other at Clemson know about it, in case they're interested in it at Clemson. He's the Robert Louis Coker endowed chair of some sort of nuclear genetic cross processing or something like it. People all were like, man, that's a place in Charleston. But...
It'd be nice if we could videotape one of your presentations, just to archive it.
If you would like. I want to make it fun, and I want to make it interactive.
Yeah.
And I want people that don't understand history, um... There were 30 ladies there at Coach Peter Seaver's seed company that taught me what real leadership is all about. They teach leadership at Carver College, and they don't do dirt farming leadership. They don't do base leadership. They teach us in books. Lady at Coach Peter Seaver's company, I can tell you the story sometime, lots of it to the kids. But this Martha, this Martha McCrory, and that crowd, they were some bitches. But anyway, I just encourage y'all to come back. The second thing I wanted to bring up, and it's not as much fun as history, and I really don't know what to do about it. But, you know, Hartsville's been nominated All-American City for, I don't know, twice, something like that. And as I said before, I've... Well, I've been in charge of the museum out there as chairman for the last 12 years, but I've been with them since 2002, 18 years. The last 12 years, at least once a week, sometimes every other week, I don't get paid to do anything. I open it, I close it, I clean it, I blow it out, I spray it around, I pull weeds. But I spend now two and a half hours a week of my time picking up trash and feet, and I did it last week, and I picked up two 35-gallon bags full of trash, 22 and a half hours. And I don't know what to do about it. I'm frankly done. I can't stand in my heart to see the amount of rubbish that we generate on this planet. I don't see any efforts to keep Hartsville clean. I have talked to sanitation department, I've watched their mowers run over garbage and shred it up, which only adds to my problem. I have talked with the police department, I have been to Walmart 20 times, which I picked this up in about 15 minutes, and it's 80% Walmart bags. Many of them never been used, never been opened, but they claim medicines. There is no sign to say, please don't throw your trash in the ground. And I know, and y'all know, people are not carrying their groceries to their car and unloading and throwing the bags in the ground. I've been behind Walmart, it's pristine, but yet we still... No sanitation, pure sale sanitation lags, they are thousands of them. Last year, just Walmart bags. Y'all may think this is crazy, but I counted. I picked up over 40, 5,000 Walmart bags. That doesn't count Merck, that doesn't count sanitation products, that doesn't count Zaxby's and Donnys, or Winnies, or anything else. I stopped by the Bo James, this is going on. I met with the superintendent of construction. He's a very nice guy, and I said, you know, I told him the story, and I said, I really don't want to pick up any Bo James. I really don't. Do y'all think you could put small things back behind that separates our national historic landmark property? And he said, we know the actual owners are out Charlotte, North Carolina, the developers and owners. And they've been talking, they like to clean up between oak trees there, so they have a better view for the people looking at the cotton field when it's in season, and a view of the museum. And I said, okay, decent, not a fight, they want to talk to you. And I thought that was highly viewed. But I don't... I really don't know what to do. I mean, I could go to the police department, this is not my trash. If your trash from your garden can, from your yard, goes across to your neighbors, it's not your neighbor's trash, it's your trash. And it is highly unfair to me. I do it because I keep standing looking at it. And, um... But, you know, I guess I can file a letter complaint and report, report to the police department every single week against Walmart and the other institutions. But that doesn't get you anywhere. I can ask the United States Department of Interior to stop writing letters to Walmart in Bentonville, Arkansas, but I don't think that would get you anywhere. I could stop writing letters. I am out of... I'm out of options. I'm not going to do that job I've been to, I can promise you that. I think I could go to my park and die in country at Coach Peter Seaver's seed company. But I enjoy it. I enjoy talking to people about it, and I definitely enjoy the living. And I just don't know what to do. I've asked the police department, park in our driveway, but just on speed, all of them tear it up in my driveway, you know? If you catch someone, if you catch somebody litter, how about ticking? I thought about putting up cameras. I thought about putting up a fence, but that's not the answer. Who's going to keep the fence on? What about the cotton peppers and the plants and all of those, so? I don't know. I just wanted to come to the Hartsville City Council and ask for y'all's thoughts and ideas. I mean, figure out something, I mean...
So we've got some ideas, and we think we can help. You and I have had this conversation before, Natalie and I have this conversation often. We have a shared interest. You know, yours is the historic landmark, and ours is obviously, it's a gateway to the city.
This is primary?
Yeah, we both have a vested interest in keeping it up. I don't think that there's one solution. I think it's a, you know, a few solutions, and some of them are going to be better than others, but we had a... We had contact with some new leadership at Walmart Corporate, maybe it's their district office, I don't know, but they're... They've engaged us in some conversations, and I think that we can approach them about being a part of some solutions. You know, I'm with you, I don't think that, you know, people drive by and throw grocery bags out the windows while they're driving down Fourth Street, but they are coming nonetheless from all of these commercial properties. There's no other place that you can... The bags probably even say where they come from to some degree, right?
Well, they... They won't. I don't generate any trash.
Right, so we know where the source is, we just have to come up with a couple of different approaches, because it won't just be, you know, one cleanup day. It won't be, you know, what happens, I guess, when you retire or can't do it. You know, it's not going to be a one-day, one-time thing. It has to be an ongoing battle. But we do have some pretty good ideas. I think that would help out.
I'd love to participate in those discussions.
Sure.
Have it sometime.
Yeah.
Just to offer either opinions or feedback. These bags are the number one, it's what I want to call it, the number one contaminant in cotton. When the cotton figure comes through, every time that James Daniel Chapler puts his cotton figure out there, I'm in front of that cotton figure picking up plastic, because if it gets in there, the gin cannot get it out, it melts, and then it gets rejected by the wheat and the spammers, and it's a problem. But, you know, this morning, it was clean. This afternoon, we had a west wind, and I will tell you, it's... I was in another hour and a half, pounding through that field with people blowing horns at me and waving, and, you know...
So we'll follow up with you with some of these thoughts and ideas, and maybe we can get together and have that cup of coffee, and if you let the clerk know, or Bobby, or one of us, Johnny, somebody, when you're going to do your presentation, I think it really would be important to get that archived somehow for, you know, for the city's history, if not for the county's.
I could call either Natalie or...
Either one.
I mean, I've called you, we talked to one of them.
Yeah, either one.
Bobby, what did you think about it?
It was impressive, and I was going to say, with all the panels there, y'all need to see this, it takes up the wall, and there's displays in the back, but it is a living history. You can start at any point in there, and you'd be okay with it. This morning, yesterday, I was in there, and, you know, getting set up, it's just, it's amazing that you put together so much of it, but it literally tells the history. I love the pictures of the people there, and that brings it all to life.
I think it's been an amazing...
Very impressive.
Mr. Coker, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. And by the way, thank you. Thank you, Walmart.
So it's not on the agenda, but our county councilman, Louis Brown, that represents the city of Hartsville, is here, and it's always a delight to see our representing members come, and so I saw him not long ago, and he said he would come, and his wife was sick at home, and he still came, so there'll be punishment to be had, but he's come. So I don't know, do you want to take a few minutes, tell us what's going on, or say anything?
Well, unlike you now, I don't have the opportunity to say something sometimes. I won't get into his specifics. I do thank Johnny for coming to a couple meetings, and, uh... But I would say that over three years ago, I... One of the things when I went on council that I thought was probably the most important thing for the county to move forward was our administrator and the city manager worked very closely. And I will say, of all the things that have happened over the last three years, I think this has been a measure that has... Well, I don't know if you can measure how much that has meant to both the city and the county. The other thing I think that is, in a vegetable term, that I think, I won't say it's the only time it's happened, but it's been quite a long time, but the multi-county district department regarding the county, I mean, the Canal District, was in order, it's a council passed eight years ago. So I think the dialogue between the city and the council is, I would say certainly, I think it's the best of everything, so I would just... And that's commendable for both sides, and I'd just like to say, for the mayor, that the counties, and I'll speak for me and the county, I think, but echo one of the same things. We certainly appreciate the collaborative effort. Thank you.
Well, thank you for taking the time to come. I'd invite you... Normally, we take a picture with our councilmember. If you're so inclined, we'd love to have a picture of you under the seal.
I'm certainly not informed, so I don't...
Come on up, let's take a picture. We had Al come last time, so we'll jump in, and everybody come get around. Johnny needs a good picture for his reelection today, so we'll use that, right? Come file it. All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming.
A little bit.
A little bit, a little bit.
Alright, items on the, oh, I'm sorry, the manager's update, Madam Manager.
Jordan has two introductions, new employees. Not yet.
We have added to our team, I'm next to Alex, this is our new aquatic manager, David Gaddy, and we facilities maintenance supervisor, Scott R.
We stole one from the city after.
No, we recruited. We didn't steal that one. Um, welcome, we're glad to have you, uh, on board, um, you know, yeah, you guys got a, you've got the coolest job and probably most important job, kind of all together in the city. So, uh, what are the two, what are your titles again?
I'm the aquatic manager, city manager.
Okay, okay. So, let's, uh...
Yes, sir.
The biggest question is, have you, have you changed the lock code at the back of the gate, is it still the same? I'm asking for a friend, because my friend never likes to buy season passes, he just remains anonymous, but he comes in the back gate sometimes.
He's one of the ladder backers.
That's exactly the one I'm calling, Ladder Andrews, look, y'all. Ladder Andrews. Um, y'all, um, I hope you have a, a good season with Jordan too, y'all, um, you do have the coolest job, probably by calling this in, so, um, do a good job, and if you need help or much, you just let us know.
Appreciate it.
Help or... Alright, Madam Manager, anything further?
I just wanted to introduce our new, um, reporter that'll be covering our meetings, this is Matthew Christian. We, um, you certainly, um, have some big shoes to fill, Jim was, you know, he was
a staple here, and certainly like family to us, um, and I know that, um, I know that y'all are, uh, gonna do a good job, you're gonna do a good job as well. Anything that we can kind of help you with to get comfortable or acclimated, uh, please let us know. We have all the special goodies in the, in the back clerk's room, so if you need something...
I have Johnny Self.
Awesome. When you can't get the P I O, yeah, Johnny's your guy, yeah.
Always good for, that's an excellent writer, can read the morning news things, he's been doing that for a couple of years, he does it once.
Bobby likes for us to Photoshop his pictures before you run them, so if you could just kind of give us a...
I'll be right on that.
Couple hours. No, no, we have an in-house team that does that. Yeah, so, um, so welcome, and, um, it does bring up, you know, we, we are going to miss our good friend, um, Jim Vale, he was, um, certainly a consummate professional for the city and what he did, and he loved, he loved the city and he supported what we were doing, um, and he was, uh, really good at what he, what he did, so. Um, welcome, anything else, Madam?
Just a reminder, this is our last meeting, before you have to follow your statements back on. Good job.
Really? When you, when you got zero, there's not a lot to report, right? That's what I'm... Did you have zero? How weird is that? Yeah, I was building my seven dollar and twenty-five cent war chaps and got three one hundred dollar finds, for not turning the dead one, though. Alright, so if there's nothing further, then items on the consent agenda will be received as information without objection, we stand. Moving on to unfinished business, item six on our agenda is public hearing and final reading of ordinance forty-three eighty-two, the manager will publish.
Item twelve, Baileyville certification and designation, located at one forty South Fourth Street.
Okay, you've heard the reading by title on the presentation, ordinance forty-three eighty-two, this is the chair, open the public hearing. If you'd like to be heard on ordinance forty-three eighty-two, if you rise, state your name and address for record, come to the front, and limit your comments to two minutes or less, please. And hearing that there are none, the chair will adjourn to the public hearing and entertain a motion to adopt.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt ordinance forty-three eighty-two.
Second. Is there any discussion on the ordinance?
Yes.
Madam?
You're the mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
This, uh, assignment, or this project of twenty-year reprieve. Okay, Seth, next.
It depends on how much they're spending on a project, I don't know that we have all of those numbers yet. So if it's more than fifty percent or more than it is for twenty years...
That's correct.
And I'm certain they will be in well over that. There's a lot of work to be done.
There's two hundred and nine thousand five hundred, that's what the estimated product cost is.
And the fair market value is one sixty, so that equals to seventy-seven percent, so that's twenty-seven percent over the fifty percent, so that qualifies them for the twenty years.
So that would be four thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars for the next twenty years.
Um, what their taxes are now, yeah.
That's what it would be, unless we go a lot higher.
Okay, anything further, Madam?
I mean, if it's a building, it's a public building, so the interior renovations count towards that as well, so you get to a higher number per per.
Alright, if there's nothing further at all in favor, signify by saying aye. Close by nay. The ayes have it. Item seven on the agenda is public hearing and final reading of ordinance forty-three eighty-three, the manager will publish.
So approval to lease a portion of Alway at one twenty South History from the trust company.
Okay, you've heard the reading by title on the presentation, ordinance forty-three eighty-three, the chair will open the public hearing. If you'd like to be heard on ordinance forty-three eighty-three, if you rise, state your name and address for record, please limit your comments to two minutes or less. And, sir, did you, in the back? No? Did you need, did you? Sir, did you need to say something, sir, in the back? No? Okay. Thought we were gonna have to call you, Nelson. Hearing that are in favor, move to close the public hearing and entertain a motion to adopt.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance forty-three eighty-three.
Second. Is there any discussion? Hearing in all in favor, signify by saying aye. Close by nay. The ayes have it. Moving into new business, item eight on the agenda is resolution three dash twenty dash oh one, the resolution to certify two units located at seven fifty South History, tax map number, tax map number oh five six dash one four dash oh four dash oh seven one, has abandoned building sites pursuant to South Carolina Abandoned Buildings Revitalization Act, is there such a motion?
No.
Is there any discussion? Hearing in all in favor, signify by saying aye. Close by nay. Resolution carries. Item nine on the agenda is resolution oh three dash twenty dash oh two, a res- resolution for approval of engineering firm for hazard mitigation grant drainage study, is there a motion to adopt?
No.
Is there any discussion? Hearing in all in favor, signify by saying aye. Close by nay. The ayes have it. Item ten on our agenda is resolution oh three dash twenty dash oh three, a resolution to request annexing an approximately point nine one plus or minus acres of land owned by the city of Hartsville, known on tax map parcel oh five six dash zero zero dash oh one dash oh two six, located at thirteen thirty South Markey Highway, is there a motion to adopt?
No.
Second. Is there any discussion? Hearing, pardon?
Any buildings on our...
Just a large, it's not, it's not already, it's now, because we have the apartment one, that's where we're from.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing in all in favor, signify by saying aye. Close by nay. The ayes have it. Item eleven on our agenda, the new business is first reading of ordinance forty-three eighty-four, the manager will publish.
It's an ordinance to lease a property to East Carolina Avenue, Conspire, LLC, this is a property next door to City Hall, they have not increased rent, um, and it will be through twenty twenty-three, that is property.
Okay, you've heard the reading by title on the presentation, of ordinance forty-three eighty-four on first reading, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance forty-three eighty-four.
Second. Okay, there's a motion in the seconds, are there any discussion? Hearing in all in favor, signify by saying aye. Close by nay. The ayes have it. Item twelve on the agenda is first reading of ordinance forty-three eighty-five, the manager will publish.
It's an ordinance to lease a property at one forty-nine West Carolina Avenue to Darlington County Humane Society, it's one year, and we're not marketing it for the free, so...
Okay, you've heard the reading by title on the presentation, of ordinance forty-three eighty-five, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt.
I make a motion that we adopt on forty-three eighty-five.
Second. Motion in the seconds, are there any discussion? Hearing in all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oh, pardon? Yes, Madam?
I just wanted to add, have they inquired about a more than one year reprieve?
Not to my knowledge, Amber is not here, are you?
She is here.
You are. Um, in the past, they wanted to do it year to year, just to make sure they're still making money, um, because it's all going back to the main society, they need to cover their rent. It's a pretty small, it's going to be difficult to lease, I think, to many other people.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing further along, favor, signify by saying aye. Close by nay. The ordinance carries. Uh, item thirteen on the agenda is first reading of ordinance forty-three eighty-six, the manager will publish.
It's annexing approximately point nine one acres of land owned by the city of Hartsville, known as tax map parcel number zero five six zero 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 one zero two six, located at thirteen thirty South Markey Highway, this is just officially bringing it in before he requested to bring it in, because it's owned by the city.
Okay, you've heard the reading by title on the presentation, the board is forty-three eighty-six, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt ordinance forty-three eighty-six.
Is there any discussion? Hearing in all in favor, signify by saying aye. Close by nay. The ayes have it. Item fourteen on the agenda is motion in your executive session pursuant to South Carolina Code Freedom of Information Act, section thirty dash four dash seventy, paragraph eight, sub-paragraph one, for the discussion of appointments to the city attorney and a city judge, is there such a motion?
No.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing in all in favor, signify by saying aye. Close by nay. Ladies and gentlemen, we stand in executive session in five minutes.